Good evening, everyone. We're gonna start a study session. Can everyone please take your seat? Welcome to the Deer Valley Study Session. I call the order for this study session. Today is February 7th and it's 6:00 PM. Let the record reflect that all board members are present. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, motion passed. Okay, the purpose of the meeting is to have a study session on standard-based grading for the governing board to listen to all stakeholders' concerns and views, to allow the community the opportunity to engage in conversations with the board. This study session is scheduled for two hours. Please be respectful and speak to the point so others can have a chance to speak. Mrs. Fisher, can you explain the process that how we're gonna be calling individuals?
If you did not get a ticket, which is if you wanna speak, just put your name on the back of a ticket, throw it in the box, we're gonna randomly pull names. If there's others that wanna speak beyond that, they can add a ticket, or we can just do it the way we've always done historically, where if somebody has something to say, they come up and we call on them. So is there anybody that currently wants to speak and has not submitted a ticket? No? Okay, so then we'll go ahead. Have one.
Make sure when you come to speak that you state your name for the record and the school that you represent or your child represents.
I didn't see any other hands. Might wanna move forward?
Yeah. Okay, Mrs. Fisher, can you call out the names?
Pull her name.
Or Ms. Stephan?
Just pull her name.
Uh, Vicki Jones?
Okay, Vicki Jones. Go ahead and just pick a microphone.
Karen too, that's lovely.
Yeah. And then just tell us what you have to say.
There you go.
Just have my glasses on. Well, um, I...
State your name and your school.
I'm Vicki Jones, Deer Valley High School. And I'm just very traditional, and there's been a lot of changes throughout the years, and especially in the last recent years. And I try to be really open-minded to the changes, but there has to be extensive training for teachers to feel comfortable with anything that is implemented. I'm not, I'm not for this, and the reason is, is because I know that if students have a zero, if they get a zero, it digs a deep hole. But my father always taught me, don't ever get in a hole, and if you do, it'll be hard to get out, but you can. And, and he'd always applied that to having a credit card, never have a debt. And I always thought, I know that we're trying not, zeros are hard on the kids, but I know teachers are very realistic about, we'll do anything to help kids have success. And there's extenuating circumstances for everything. So this new, you know, standards-based grading to only be at, to start at 50%, it allows for procrastination, it allows for irresponsibility, and I don't think it is the reality of what they're gonna face when they leave. I don't think we're preparing them for the future with this, with this plan. Now, I hear, I just had a visit with somebody, and she's pro, but I would, it would take a lot, a lot for me to be able to make that switch. It's a big switch, and it's, it is for the kids and it is for the staff. I don't, I don't wanna see it happen. At the same time, if anything happens, any more changes happen in this district with everything that's happened, there has to be extensive training, and during the workday. Thank you.
Chrissy Seals.
If you can go ahead and state your name and what school you're representing.
My name is Chrissy Seals. My daughter goes to Union Park. Just to be clear for the record, I do not think the program is quite ready yet. I do think that the fact that the program has been asked, put in place, it's a noble cause. We have been on the program since my started, my daughter started at Union Park. My son has already graduated from one of the Deer Valley School Districts under the traditional grading scale. And I will tell you, he is, the work that is required for him in college now, my daughter will not be able to manage that. Tonight, I actually sat down with my daughter before I came here and said, "How do you feel today versus how when we started?" And I will tell you, she's still a little confused, I'm still a lot confused, and I've been with this program for the last seven months, eight months in the school. And I, my concern is that there is still a lot of questions around understanding the true grading scale. The other things that are concerning for me is that when I get a call from the teacher or an email from the teacher saying that my daughter is the only one that did homework, that tells me that other students aren't doing homework. I did a lot of research on this program before we started this, just to get a clear understanding, saying, "Do I really understand it?" I will tell you that there are a lot of research that says that schools have reversed doing this program because it wasn't ready. For example, the state of Maine did pass laws asking the schools to switch to this program. They found that the teachers were struggling, they found that the students were struggling, they found that the parents were frustrated, so they actually reversed the laws. San Diego, one of the second-largest school districts in the country, struggled with this. After two years, they had a lot of schools that reverted back because they just weren't ready yet. There was a research done by Pepperdine University. Students that entered college under the two programs were asked, "How do you feel that you were prepared?" Eighty-eight percent of the students said they did not feel adequately prepared for college under the, the new program. Part of that is, is that university professors are not as forgiving. You have to do your homework, you have to get your grades, you can't retake tests. My son is an engineering student, his final is 50% of his grade. If he doesn't do his labs, he's not gonna understand, and he fails, and we pay for that exam again, or that test, or that class again. My daughter will not be prepared for that. She has not, she does her homework, and I'll be honest, I don't even know how well she's doing because I have to check her grades to even know. In the past, she'd come home, I'd help her with her homework, I would know that she was struggling in a certain area of math, or a certain area of science. Today, there's no homework, I don't know. I have to ask, I have to dig, I have to call the teachers, I have to see. And if she's doing well, guess what, she's got As and Bs? I don't get, I don't need to have a, a teacher reach out to me, because she's, she's a fairly decent student, I mean, as far as, you know, showing up and being there and being present, but I do not know that she's gonna be ready for high school. With the amount that I'm seeing, I think that when I look at the grades that she does get on her practice, it's not where it should be, but yet she's passing the assessments. As a parent, I'm not sure what that means. She has retaken, I love that this, this opportunity to retake some of these tests gives her an opportunity to get better, 'cause she's one of my, she's my student, she's my kid that needs that. So I do think that there's merit in the program. I, my concern is, is it ready yet? And based on what I'm seeing in evidence from other schools and research, there's a lot of things and gaps that still need to be filled. Thank you.
Kelsey Reed. State your name and what school you're from.
My name is Kelsey Reed, and I have two middle school kids at Stetson Hills Elementary. We are not currently doing SPG, but our principal basically has us in an interim program to where she is setting our teachers up for SPGs supposed to be coming next year. So what has happened this last year, I have, both of my kids are in the gifted cohort. And this year, our homework has become 1% of their grade, and 99% is their test scores, so it's very close to SPG. So as we have been progressing through the school year, I have noticed that my kids have multiple missing assignments, as I look in power schools. So I, I approach them, and the answer to me is, "Well, Mom, I'm still getting an A, who cares?" So my kids, basically, they're just inherently, they, they are good memorizers. They memorize things, they regurgitate it for the test, and if they get a low score, they'll memorize and regurgitate it for the next test. They're not really gaining because they're not doing all of their work. It is created laziness, it's making it worse for me, and my husband, we're having to force them to do their work now. So that is what I'm seeing with SPG at this point, it's frustrating to me. Now, the retakes, Stetson has done a wonderful job implementing certain, certain parts of this SPG program years ago. We've had retakes for good grief, I don't know, over 10 years since my kids have been at Stetson Hills. And the last several years, we have implemented a program where there's no such thing as getting below a 49%. So even if I do, my kids do have missing assignments, or in the past had them, they would get a 49%. So those SPG criteria are in place, it's the grading system that is crazy, too. People still don't understand it, is a 90 to 100 an A, which is a four, or is it an 87.5 to 100, or is it a 92 to 100? Nobody knows, is it over and above? Because that's what it was when my kids were in kindergarten and they had the 0 through 4 grading system, it was over and above. So my kids were all threes because they were just doing what they needed to do to get by. Then, last year in OC, I hear that multiple kids are not getting fours because they aren't going over and above, but they're in the 90s for what they're, they're getting 95s, 98s, but they're getting threes. It, it makes no sense to me, it's just confusing. So just one more topic. When both of my kids tested for the gifted cohort, I, I thought it was humorous when I was at the last board meeting, everything is based on, is percentage-based. So a 92, or a 95, or whatever that cutoff is, which is an A, is what tests you to get into the gifted cohort. So it doesn't make sense to me why we're transitioning and turning this into something completely different, a 4, 3, 2, 1. I guess it's, it's not broken, so why are we changing it? So why don't we just bring some of these things, district-wide, the 49%, the retakes, whatever, the criteria that comes with the SPG mentality, I guess, and implement those district-wide, and leave the grading system as it is to avoid the confusion.
What's that last name? Rachel? Rachel, we're gonna guess it's like Bagel, or B-A-L? Oh, yep, that would be it. Can't read her handwriting.
I'm gonna go with Jen Baldi, just to sit by her. And I, I would like to speak too, if that's okay. I have a note card, but...
Okay, we can, we can put them together.
Okay.
My name is Rachel Baldi, and I'm a student, my name is Rachel Baldi, and I'm a student at Stetson Hills. I'm in fifth grade, and SPG was implemented at my school this year. I've already seen negative effects of this grading system. I'm in the gifted cohort at school, and I have experienced how standardized grading benefits those who are not trying and those who are, who do try are suffering. Just this quarter, my English teacher dropped due, my English, sorry, my English grade dropped due to missing two questions on my assignment. My teacher gave me the opportunity to retake and average their scores. I mean, it wasn't her fault, all my teachers are wonderful, but I'm just saying that it feels like they don't really understand because they have not been given, they have not been giving, given, they have not been given
Adequate.
adequate training on standardized grading. Anyway, how does this grading system prepare us for the real world with unlimited retakes? I am lucky that I am in the gifted cohort, I am in fifth grade, and this has not yet affected my college goals. The current high school students are seeing long-term, long-term consequences to missing two questions on their transcripts, transcripts submitted to colleges. This, these are gifted students just like me, who are, who were previously straight-A students. Getting a four is impossible, 'cause we can't, 'cause we can show we know the standard, but are not given the opportunity to do extra credit to show we are above proficiency, while our counterparts who miss assignments are still getting credit for doing nothing. I ask that you put a stop to this, to standardized grading and let our districts go back to the traditional grading system. Thank you.
Just state your name, so that we have it on the record and the school.
Thank you, my name is Jen Baldi, and this is my daughter Rachel, and my son, they're both students of Stetson Hills. Both are in the gifted program. SPG was introduced at Stetson this year. I'm a substitute teacher in the district, and I can tell firsthand how the grading system's encouraging laziness. How many times have I heard a student say to me, "Mrs. Baldi, is this for a grade? Mrs. Baldi, I don't have to do this now, I'll do it later when my teacher gives me a retake." Well, this system encourages procrastination, it's discouraging our brightest students. "Mrs. Baldi, how do I go above and beyond on this assignment? Mrs. Baldi, my teacher doesn't care if I do my best work, just as long as I get this done." As a district who prides itself on turning out well-prepared graduates, standardized grading takes us a step in the wrong direction. These students will go to college and professors will tell them they aren't college material. "No, we don't do retakes here." "No, you don't get the whole semester to complete that project." "No, you do not get a 50% just because you came to class." As a teacher, as a mom, and as a contributing member of society, I ask that you put a stop to this grading system. It does a disservice to our teachers and our students. Please let our teachers teach rather than spend countless hours creating rubrics and grading retakes. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify something. Both Anne and I were at Stetson Hills this week, visiting schools, and my understanding is that you're, the sense that it's a Phase III school, and has not been implemented yet. Am I correct in that?
This is the first time I've seen it in her fifth-grade classroom. I've seen them... Okay, well, it's, we're seeing aspects of it, I don't...
President Paperman, Ms. Simacek, Stetson Hills is a Phase III school. They've not implemented the full aspect with everything, although Stetson Hills is a longtime school who has worked in this direction in past years.
Okay, so I guess I'm just seeing aspects of it and not the full implemented program? Okay. This is just, it's new for Rachel this year, that she's seen these things.
Rachel White. If you could state your name for the record and what school you're from.
My gosh, I'm so nervous. My name's Rachel White, and my son is a fourth grader at Stetson. Boy, I had this whole thing written out, I have been pondering about it for a long time, and I was talking back and forth with a teacher, and I decided and asked their permission to just read this very informative text, because I'm, I was rather confused as to what it, what this even is, you know, and how, how it is better than the standard grading. And I did find it disheartening that it, it seems like many teachers are, have a sense of intimidation, not, you know, being afraid to speak how they feel about the, the system that we're discussing tonight. So I asked their permission to just kinda go over some of this, this well-written, these well-written thoughts. Anyway, it says, "Teachers have received limited training in how to implement. There's a lot of inconsistency from school to school, as each grade level or department at different schools is unwrapping standards and are supposed to create rubrics." And I didn't know what a rubric was. "A rubric for a standard at one school will differ widely from another. Even the way numbers are given out differs from teacher to teacher at the same school. Many high school students have been told they cannot achieve a four, while some teachers give them out freely. A student can benefit or not based solely on the teacher they have. Teachers are expected to create cumbersome rubrics for every assignment." And I can't imagine that. Imagine teachers who teach multiple subjects having to create a rubric for every reading, writing, speaking, listening, math, science, and social studies assessment, then having to use this rubric to grade an assignment. A simple five-question quiz could take several hours to grade, and that's per subject. Teachers know their students, they know which kids have which skills and what they need to improve on without the use of SPG. I believe that if SPG passes, we will lose many wonderful teachers. They can go to another district, or may just leave the professional together, which to me, knowing this person, speaks, just is, is very weighty on my mind and heart. I would, I would hate to see this teacher be forced to look elsewhere for employment. I don't think we can afford to lose teachers. For students, many have had several different grading policies over the past few years. Our district hasn't rolled it out properly, so the on-again, off-again grading is confusing. I concur. I feel that it punishes students who excel, but also punishes students with special needs. Many parents are not aware of the changes that the district has coming if their child is not currently at a SPG school. Parents really just look at the main grade for their children, that's me. They want to know where their child is excelling and what their child may need to improve on. There seems also to be backlash on staff members who've spoken out against it. And there are some, some good things, you know, no grades below 50, so students can dig themselves out of a poor grade in retakes. I, for one, with my son, he is in fifth, or he's in fourth grade, and he's taking fifth grade math, and he's so proud of every grade that he works so hard for. And the As, he just, he comes home holding the As up, you know, and that's on a personal note. It may not mean a lot to the decision-making tonight, but it, it does mean a lot to him. And just to have that, that taken away, and to have this more confusing, I know, it, it makes no sense to me when he's got papers that he brings home that aren't even completed that he's gotten, you know, that seemed to be acceptable. I don't know, I, I just, I, I don't agree with this implementation, and, and I thought it was more important, rather, to read my emotional plea, to read something like that, that was really informative, so, thank you very much.
Virginia Mullins. Just go ahead and state your name and then what school you're at.
Hi, my name is Virginia Mullins. I've been teaching at the Traditional Academy at Bella for 23 years. I have two children at Deer Valley High School, a child at Desert Sky Middle School, and a child at the Traditional Academy as well. Two of my children are in gifted and AP classes, and two of my children are on 504s. Standards-based grading is teaching our children that only the big stuff counts, the regular, everyday tedious work doesn't count, so don't bother doing it. Don't bother creating a habit of doing regular homework, because you won't be rewarded for it. Kids are learning to do the minimum now, because that's the grade they are being given for the assignments, the minimum. This doesn't transfer into the real world and is likely to cause down-the-road consequences. It gives students many chances to improve, but due to this, many students won't give their best for the first attempt. This is an increase in workload for teachers, who must prioritize standards, create rubrics, realign assessments. Many teachers have to design the assessment many times just to be according to the standards. This will be a huge transition for parents, who will need support in trying to interpret this new type of assessment system, since letter grades are no longer used. If you happen to have a child or children with a learning disability, an anxiety disorder, or any kind of mental illness, or situation that creates academic challenges for your child, standards-based grading is not for them. It would only cause them more anxiety. We already have standards on the report cards, and parents are able to view them. If we are to implement standards-based grading next year to all schools, there will be a complete inconsistency across our so-called unified district. I know schools that have been, have had little to no training on something that is supposed to be implemented next year. How many more programs or ideas do we as a district have to try and then fail at? This kind of grading takes into consideration the average child who tests under ideal circumstances. The moral of the story is that educators are in the business of developing people, not managing autonomous learning machines. Thank you.
Karen Beeman. Go ahead and state your name and then the school you're at.
My name is Karen Beeman.
If there's not a light, go ahead and push the button, there you go.
My name is Karen Beeman, I'm from Union Park. I don't have anything prepared to say, except for, I just wanna speak from my heart about standards-based grading, what we've been doing at Union Park. We started this, we were a Phase 1 school, and so we've been doing this for two years. Many of us teachers have worked really hard to make this happen and make it successful at Union Park. The students we teach can explain their grades better than I've ever seen before. The conversations I'm hearing with parents at conferences with their students, students know what they're doing on every standard and how they're doing, why they are where they are. The parents, then, can understand from the student's perspective. We teach our students to know what each one of those grades mean, whether it's a 1, 2, 3, or 4, the students know. Not only that, but the teachers have time. We have time out of classes where we've been given that time to work with other teachers of the same grade level, of the same subject, so we can prepare these rubrics, prepare our tests together, give our tests the same test the same way across all of us. The conversations we have in those PLCs are amazing. We've spent huge amounts of time just discussing what a 1, 2, 3, or 4 looks like on every question on our test. And students, when they take those tests, then they can come, for me specifically, they come up with their Chromebooks to me and show me their test, every test. I discuss every question with every student on every test. And the students can explain to me when they're giving an answer, whether, they, they can explain, if it's a four answer, their explanation to me directly tells me that they're a four. Or if they're not quite a four, 'cause they haven't quite mastered it yet. These students know what they're doing, and the grades have made them more knowledgeable about their standards. When we used to give tests, we would give tests that were, say, an entire module worth of, of knowledge. They couldn't tell what standard was what question, and we couldn't explain to those parents what each question is about. I'm, I'm sorry, we could explain what the questions were about, but we couldn't tell specifically which standard the students were lacking in, because it was one lump grade, one percentage, so you know a percentage of everything that you're supposed to know, but what specifically was? But what specifically was the standard that they were learning? They know it better now. They know every standard and can explain it. I just cannot see that this should go away. We've spent a lot of time and a lot of energy, and a lot of us are better teachers for it. We know our standards in and out, and we've spent a lot of time that we don't think we should go backwards. And I really feel that we would be going backwards if we gave this up.[625.91][625.91][applause]
Before you go, can I ask a question, Karen? I was just wondering who the people were behind you, that's all. Who the people were?
Those are all the coworkers that we've spent a lot of time doing this with. We all have banded together, and we've all worked really hard to make this successful at Union Park.
State your name and the school you're with.
Linda Slavic, teacher at Greenbrier Elementary. I teach at a Phase 3 school. I don't departmentalize, so I have 28 reading standards, 17 writing standards, 41 math standards, 12 science standards, 29 social studies standards for my 5th grade students. All that totals 127 standards. Times that by my 30 students, that makes me charge a 3,810 standards. And I reported this at my last board meeting, and someone said, "Well, you forgot, that's me for one quarter, Linda." So I'm going to go ahead and times that by 4, so my grand total is now 15,240 standards for one teacher. How can one teacher keep track, stay organized, and prove to parents their child's grades? I talked to teachers who are currently using SBG. They told me that it is too much work. They are overwhelmed and explain that there isn't consistency. Each teacher is supposed to create their own rubrics and tests. They have noticed that SBG is too subjective, just like grading writing. I'm glad that Union Park has been successful. Perhaps they can share the rubrics and the tests with the rest of us, so every single one of us don't have to create them. My school is currently using the traditional grading system. We are using SBG mindsets such as PLCs, common format assessments, analyzing data, forming small groups, unwrapping standards, we let the kids do corrections, retakes, data folders, goal setting, et cetera. We can incorporate these practices and still use the traditional grading system. It is so sad that teachers are afraid to speak up in our district. I have volunteered to be the voice of the teachers who are against SBG. I am interested in hearing the DVA survey results. I think the survey may be accurate, as it did not require names and emails, so people will answer honestly and not be scared.[787.28][787.28][applause]
Nicole Ryder. If you could state your name and the school you're with.
My name is Nicole Ryder, and I am a 5th grade Science and Social Studies teacher at Union Park School. I apologize for not speaking sooner than now. I've had previous engagements and didn't quite feel qualified enough to speak. This has been my first year at Union Park, my third year with the district, and my first year with standards-based grading. I have been teaching for seven years. I can honestly tell you that this is the first year that I have felt like I'm an actual teacher. I am looking at the standards that we're supposed to be teaching our students, and I am breaking it down into not only manageable chunks for me to teach, but manageable chunks for my students to understand. The in-progress learning grades that get put in, whether they don't qualify for the final grade, allows me as a teacher and the student to see where they are with the standard before they have to take the assessment where it does count. They're able to see, "I didn't get this part." I see it as building blocks. And before we finish the whole project, I'm able to catch them right at the beginning and help them where they are at versus waiting until the assessment and trying to figure out where did I lose them. I will be honest, our social studies curriculum is not the best in the district. And so, yes, we have a textbook, but it's not the best. And we have a pacing guide. But I still have to piece together a lesson on what I'm supposed to be teaching. I feel like with standards-based grading this year, I have been more mindful about what my lessons look like, because I know my students need to get from point A to point B. How am I going to get them there? Those are my in-progress learning grades. And once I get to point B with them, that's the assessment. What do I want them to show me? I want them to be able to show me that they've mastered the standard. That's the point of their education. I want to make sure that before they walk out of my door at the end of the school year, that they are properly prepared for the 6th grade standards that are going to come next. I can do that with standard-based grading. It scares me that there's a possibility that it will go away. Yes, it has been a lot of work, not going to lie. But it has been so nice to work with other 5th grade Science and Social Studies teachers in my PLC team to come up with these rubrics, to come up with our end goal, to know that what we're doing is best for students and that we are going to make them successful. My students are not allowed to not do in-progress assignments. They still have to do that. That's their practice to help them before they get to the assessment. So no, I don't allow them to just not do their best work and/or not do the work at all and just wait till assessments. I tell them that's not fair to them and that's not fair to me. We need to work together to make sure 5th grade is a science, 5th grade science is a now-state-tested assessment. I need to make sure that they're ready for that assessment. They need to make sure that they're ready for that assessment. And we do that with the building grade, building blocks of in-progress learning, and then the assessment. I feel like, yes, there are bugs in the program. There's always bugs and flaws in any new system that you implement. But I can tell you, with training, with practice, working together like teachers are supposed to, it can and will be successful. And I feel like we are only going to hurt our students if we take this away. It makes me a better teacher, it makes others a better teacher, and we are truly teaching students what they need to know and not just how to get an A, 100%, so they can pass on to the next grade.
Elizabeth Shoulderly? I know I totally butchered that, sorry. Go ahead and say your name for the record and your school.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Schoolly. I'm a junior in AP classes at Boulder Creek. I've been in the DVUSD school district since 5th grade. And I haven't always been the best student academically, but if I put myself to it, I can achieve my goals with my academics. Ever since I started attending the DVUSD schools, I feel as if I never was challenged and if there was no punishment for not doing my assignments. During my elementary years, they set me up for failure by lacking a structure within the schools and the fact that 49% don't exist within adulthood. They gave me the idea that I didn't have to do my assignments to get good grades on only the assignments that were weighted more heavily in classes. Instead of encouraging students to complete their assignments, they put 50s in the grade book, which deterred students from doing them. By doing these smaller assignments, I set myself, by not doing these smaller assignments, I set myself up for failure when entering high school. I entered high school thinking not much would change, but then I slowly started to fall behind on my assignments. My grades reflected that. Soon enough, due to my habits of not completing my assignments, I was behind about 30 assignments my freshman year. My habits did not change the following year, and the same exact thing happened. I got lots of late assignments, and I didn't understand the concepts that were. My junior year is the year I started to change everything, and I started to break my habits. Even then, this year is when the 49% got implemented, and I could have easily kept up with my habits and succeeded, but bare minimally, done the bare minimum. If we were to get rid of the 49%, it would be a rise in students doing the assignments, and the test would reflect students' understanding of the topic.
Tony Follies? Fells. We failed at that one. Go ahead and state your name and your school for the record.
Hi, my name is Tony Fells. I've been teaching for over 30 years. I currently teach Honors Bio and Anatomy at Boulder Creek High School and have been here for 15 years. I've coached for over 30 years. I love teaching and working with students. In all those years, I've never felt compelled to come to a board meeting. I'm sickened that I have to be here tonight to express my views. I am here tonight to speak against this ridiculous grading policy. I am being forced to implement against my students. When I tell people what our district is doing, they are usually drop-jawed and incredulous. They shake their heads in disgust, like, "What's happening in this school?" In our mission statement, it says we are preparing our students for career and college readiness. What college gives students credit for doing nothing? What career can I aspire to that rewards me for not working? The only career I can think of is that of a welfare recipient. I have witnessed the tragic effects of this misguided policy firsthand. It has helped some of my F students pass with no knowledge of the content, so I'm sure it will improve our graduation rate. I have also noticed how it has caused a sharp decrease in my B, C, and D students, who quickly realized how little work they need to do, pass. While my A students' grades are largely unaffected, they are now forced to endure being in classes where the motivational bar is set so low, I fear it may be having a negative effect on their mental health. I have also felt my mental health deteriorate this year due to the moral injury being inflicted on me by being forced to give students credit for doing nothing. This policy goes against every ethical fiber in my body. I have never felt ashamed of being a teacher until now. I am being forced to be complicit in damaging my students' overall well-being. I would also like to address the standards-based grading policy. While it may work for some teachers in some situations, it does not and will not work for me. If I am forced to pigeonhole my curriculum and content into a 0 to 4-based grading system, I will adapt, but my students will lose out. I do not see the point of all this wasted time, money, and effort to change a well-developed grading system that is accepted by colleges and community members to one that is rife with flaws. I have heard so many horror stories from teachers, parents, and students regarding the implementation of this new system. In my opinion, we should be using all the resources that we have been throwing at this nonexistent problem into giving teachers time and money to refine what is already working and spend more of our efforts directly helping students learn.
I just had a quick question about where Boulder Creek is in their process. My understanding was they're a Phase 3. Is that correct?
President Paperman, Ms. Simicheck, that is correct. They are a Phase 3 school. Many of the schools, similar to Stetson Hills, have in the past moved to that 49 to 100 scale.
But the 49, I just want to confirm, the 49 is an F, right?
That would be correct.
Is a F grade, okay.
Dr. Gallagher, can you explain to community members that are watching if they're Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, just to refresh them with what it is within the school, with the process, with standard-based grading? Thank you.
President Paperman, as we were going through this process, and that was about three years prior to the pandemic in 2020, there were schools who had been working in this direction, oh, probably from 2010 forward, it just hadn't been formalized. We became a bit more formal as we entered the 2020s. And our Phase 1 schools were nine. And those were the schools where the principal had worked with the staff and community about this change. But that was after the school had worked on the standards-based mindset with professional learning communities, teacher collaboration, working through how we support children with multi-tier systems of support. All of that has to be in place, and those particular school administrators had worked toward that. Then the next year, we added seven more schools, and that would have been in the 22, 23 school year this current year. So there are a total of 16 schools in Phase 1 and Phase 2 who have moved forward with a different grading. We'll call it standards-based grading, or grading aligned to standards, or evidence-based grading. There's a number of terms for that. And then the rest of the schools are in different places. Those would be our Phase 3 schools. Some of them are in significant motion with communication, training, working with their internal and external stakeholder groups. And some of them have not yet truly begun that journey. But if I could add one thing, the foundation for all of this lies in a standards-based mindset with professional learning communities and teacher collaboration around unwrapping the standards and really working through four questions that helps us address student learning.
Matt Weaver.
Just come to the mic and then state your name for the record and what school you're associated with.
Good evening, my name is Matt Weaver. I am the 7th grade science teacher at Gavlin Peak School. We are a Phase, not yet, school.[1614.56][1614.56][laughter] I'll be right out and say it. No teacher's asked for this. It doesn't actually add anything to the teaching. However, it does add an extra layer of burden on the people who are doing the work at the district, teachers teaching students. The people who are implementing it don't have that. They aren't teaching students. But those of us who are doing the hardest now have to do extra. For example, my ELA department was telling me that all of the material that they have developed since COVID, the books, the assignments, the tests, the supplementary materials, now can't be used, because wisely and correctly, each assessment looks at more than one thing in the ELA curriculum. But that can't be done, because with standards-based grading, you can only do one thing at a time, even though when we read, we don't read for just one thing at a time. It devalues practice. It says that that necessary churning, that rehearsal of the information, the thing that actually gets the kids to remember and retain, we're going to devalue that. We're not going to implement that at all. We're going to value testing. That's what it boils down to, that the testing has become more important than the actual teaching. In addressing this whole grading behavior thing, traditionally, schools have been there to turn out fully functional adults who are capable of living in society. And frankly, this doesn't do it. It teaches kids that, "Ah, you don't have to do it. That's okay, that's okay. As long as you do well on the test, it'll be fine." And I agree, a zero is very hard to come back from, and that has to be addressed. But this isn't the way. This is a fad, another educational fad. And like every fad, it has a kernel of goodness in it. It has that very heart that is good. But unfortunately, there are those who take that goodness and try to stretch it and apply it to places it doesn't fit. They're looking for that tinfoil bullet that will fix everything. And that's what's going on here. I compliment those who can do this. Well done. But my professional opinion and experience in training is just invaluable and just as important. important. And from what I've seen, this won't work. Thank you.
Cindy Lundey. Good evening. I know that you all have heard me speak before, but I'm just here again to reiterate our concerns, or my concerns, with standards-based grading. I'll say once again that I don't know any teachers, other than the ones that I've spoken or that I've heard speak tonight, that are in favor of standards-based grading. We have had training at our school, and last year, it was probably roughly a year ago, we were made to leave our classrooms for a half a day so that we could get training on how to write a rubric. It took us over three hours to write perhaps a half of a rubric on one standard, and we didn't even finish. We ran out of time. So, you know, you multiply that by the number of standards that we have, and again, like everybody else has been saying, it's a nearly impossible task. Teachers are tired. We're exhausted. We do our best every single day for these students, and then every, it just seems like our plates are being loaded and loaded and loaded with more stuff. All the parents that I've talked to at schools that are implementing standards-based grading at this point, they're dissatisfied. They're confused. They don't understand it. Their kids don't understand it. And again, the effort just isn't there. I have students myself at a school that has implemented it. Again, the rollout has been different. Over every year, they've made so many changes that it's completely confusing to kids. They started off with the numbers, and my kids were told that it's impossible to get a four. So again, you know, as you've heard before tonight, what did they do? They stopped trying. My kids can get a three with their hands tied behind their back, and that's what they did. It was impossible to get a four. The three was easy, so why go for something that is unattainable? And that was their unfortunate mindset, and it was really disheartening and sad as a parent to see and sad as a teacher to see as well. At our school right now, we are a Phase III. I'm not sure what they call it, but we're set to start it up next year, but we're halfway there. Our grade book is automatically populated. Like, if you put in a grade, a percent grade, it will automatically populate within a four, three, two, or one. And now, for our school, a four is 87 to 100. A three is in the 60s, 63, 64, something to 87. So you're saying that a 63 equates to an 87%? And I'm just wondering, again, in what world is that the case? Three is supposed to be the standard where you're passing, where you're doing well. And if you have, let's say, a doctor or a caregiver or any medical professional or any professional in general that performs at 62%, how is that satisfactory? If I perform 62% at my job, or my husband, or anybody else, you're fired because you're ineffective. And that's what we're doing. We're creating kids that aren't motivated to try hard because they can just get a three no matter what. Now, I have a friend who is teaching at, let me see where it's at, ASU. My friend is teaching an ASU class, and they do get zeros. So for the argument to be that, oh, they use standards-based grading in college, they do not. They do get zeros at ASU, and every day their assignment is late, they are docked 10%. So the fact that we don't have due dates at all, the kids can turn in whatever they need to by the end of the quarter, or whatever it is, and they get 50% for doing nothing, again, like everybody else has said, is not what the real world has for a successful contributing member of society. The community doesn't want it. We haven't bought into it. The teachers are frustrated, scared. Again, like so many have heard before, you know, I represent a lot of teachers that are afraid to be here tonight, and that's sad. That's really sad. So I do hope that you listen to our voices. I commend all the folks at Union Park that have made this work. It sounds like they've spent a whole lot of time outside of their classrooms, and for us, every time we are outside of our classroom, that takes time away from our students. And you also need to understand that we teach the standards all the time. Ever since I've been a teacher, it's been over 20 years. That's what we teach. The district gives us something that they expect the students to learn, and that's what we teach. And that's it. It doesn't change, if you change the numbers to 4, 3, 2, 1 rather than A, B, C, D, F, and make this the 4, 3, 2, 1 subjective, as everybody has said that it is, it's not going to change the way that I teach. I'm still going to teach the way I teach. I'm just going to give them a different grade because that's what the guideline is now. It's not going to change the fact that I'm teaching the standards. It's going to change the fact that, oh, well, last year, he got an 80, he would have gotten a 90% on this, but this year, he got a 2 or whatever. But it's the same thing, and me and my colleagues were just talking about this today. When at O'Connor, they have the 4, 3, 2, 1, a student could earn a 2, let's say, for one year, or a 3, yeah, or, okay, a 4, sorry. They were straight A students, and then the next year, it was 4, 3, 2, 1. It was impossible for them to earn 4. So now they're 3. So now they're not a straight A student anymore because a 3 is a 3.0. And if you're going with the grade point average, then it's a 3.0. So that's where your kids are losing scholarships. And I just hope that you guys understand that. I hope that you listen to the community. There is no buy-in from nearly all of the stakeholders, and I just want to thank you, and we appreciate the time that you've given us tonight to express our opinions. Thank you.
Ms. Paperman, Ms. Lundey? I've got a couple of questions. I didn't catch where your kids go to school. That was the first one.
Sorry. I have a daughter at Hillcrest. She's in eighth grade, and she actually went, has gone to Stetson Hills with me ever since I've taught there. One of the reasons that I moved her over to Hillcrest is because they're not quite there at standards-based grading. Right now, they're doing 70 assessments, 30 homework. So they do get credit for the classwork and the homework, right?
Wanted to clear up. And then could you go backwards to where you said 60, 62 to 87?
Yes, absolutely. That is our power schools right now. So I have it in my phone. I can send it to you, but I have the, I think it's like a zero to 25 is a 1, 25 to 60-something is a 2, 60-something to 87.5 is a 3, and then 87.5 to 100 is a 4. So if I, let's say I put in a 65 in the grade book, it'll auto-populate as a 3.
Okay. And then, Mrs. Paperman, I'd like to ask Dr. Loyer a question that has to do with O'Connor. Doc, is that, okay? That's okay. I just punched your ticket. So when Ms. Lundey talked about the fact that it's impossible, I want to make sure the words are right, to get a 4, which is why they're getting 3s, so they can only get a 3.0 grade point average, I just need you to explain that to me. And this mic is on if you want to use that one.
So I didn't hear, you can repeat the question.
Of course I can. Apparently, at O'Connor, you can't get a 4.
No, that's not the case anymore. That was the case when this first started in COVID.
Okay, but now we're talking present time. So you can get a 4 at O'Connor, so you're not stuck with a 3.0.
Well, now it's an A because now they changed it back to letters.
Well, I kind of want him, but so you're, I just want him to explain what you're saying so I can understand what's going on, and so can everyone else. So the question is, can you get a 4, and are you stuck at O'Connor with 3.0 grade point average because it's hard to achieve a 4 or harder than it was prior to learning standards in this way? And are you losing, and are our students losing scholarships due to this grading system?
All right. I can answer your question, try to answer or explain what Mrs. Lund was saying. I don't know that I can do that. So here's what I'll tell you. We started two years ago with 0 through 4. It was not impossible to get a 4. I cannot tell you that out of 120 teachers, that a few teachers may have said something like that. We clarified that very quickly. Again, it can, you hear that continues, but that is not the way that it is for us at all, so, you know, that was unfortunate. We don't do 4s anymore, so yes, a student can get a 4, a student can get an A. I have my counselors here. I've shared the data before. I don't know that we want to know the truth because we have shared that, but last year, we had $6 million more in scholarships than we've ever had. So it was 18.3 the year before. We're at 25-something this last year. So I'm not aware. Young man that spoke before, I did some checking with that, and when people say they haven't had 4s, we can go back and look at Power School, and they do have those 4s or those grades. So obviously, I can't share those things, but I'm telling you where the facts that we have. So, yeah.
And this is probably going to be really difficult, but when the amount of scholarship increases, it doesn't necessarily mean the amount of students that are receiving scholarships have? So would you know that? And if you don't?
I do. We had over 50%. So we had about 625 or so in our senior and our graduating class. We had over 300. I think it's 300, I don't know, 15? I don't want to put my counselor on the spot back there, but we did have more students that received those scholarships. So, and obviously, schools cost more, but $6 million is still a lot.
Thank you. I just wanted some clarification.
Anything else?
No, because that's all that my O'Connor thing was.
President Paperman, Ms. Fisher, make sure you put that ticket down that I talked, okay?
Mrs. Gallagher, I have a question. So with the grading system, because other schools are also have standard-based grading in practice, so their Power School is also, for example, the example that she gave, a 3 would be a 64, 87, so other schools are doing the same thing?
Mrs. Paperman, I'm going to turn this over to Kathy White. Sometimes, there has been a combination of the two grade scales, and it can get mixed up. So Kathy can explain how Power School works.
President Paperman and board and guests, let me see if I can kind of explain it. There is, and when grading standards, there is a four-point scale, 1, 2, 3, 4. If a student, say, is averaging 2s, they would, out of 2 out of 4, if you're going to overlay a percentage scale, that would look like 50%. It is not 50% of the knowledge. It is 50% of the scale. So it does get tricky if you are combining scales because they're not meant to be combined. They're two separate scales. They mean separate things. So a 0 to 100% scale is not the same as a 1 to 4 scale. As far as the grades, I think the teachers at the school mentioned that the course grades are not based on the 1, 2, 3, 4 at that school. They are based on, I believe they said, 49 to 100%. So, and that is, those are built on a, kind of that breakdown of 10 percentage points for each level.
Thank you. Any questions, board members on the greens?
For me, that didn't answer the question that you asked. I'm just trying to figure out how 62 to 87 is the same.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I follow that either. I might have to look at the scale that they're looking at. Basically, if you have an average of 3s out of the four-point scale, you would have a 75%. Now, if there's decimals that are going up, so say you have 3.5 average, you know, you're going to fall in that range before you get to the 4.0. Does that make sense?
So since this is at Stetson, which has not implemented it fully, would you be able to find that out and bring that back to us at some point? Because I really need to understand how that can be possible or what it actually means.
Yeah, absolutely. I can pull the backend scales.
Bill Schooly. You can state your name for the record on your school or your student's school.
Hello? I just want to say that you guys run a good school district. When I first came here, I was really proud of working here, and I do believe you guys financially run a great school district. Academically, I see it falling, and I can't stress that enough. I worked in, as a contractor, for 30 years in Ohio, and I came out here to retire and got a job at your school district. And I've been here for seven years, Boulder Creek High School. I teach in the math department. So what I've been noticing is I can't get a clear question answered on the standards-based grading or any part of this 49%. My question was, what percent of the content would you say that the students need to learn in order to pass a class? I must have asked that at least a dozen times with no answer, no answer at all. And I'm trying to figure out, do my kids pass? Do my kids fail? Do I just keep putting 49s in? And I totally disagree with the. Hello? Okay. I figured that 60% was a fair assessment. So if I was looking at standards, I would say that out of every 10 standards, you would need to pass six of those standards. Would that be correct? Six of those standards? And passing the six of the standards, I would probably think that a proficient score on standards would mean passing. And I'm just trying to figure out the standards-based grading. And when I get down to everything, you've got a 0 through 4, and we actually, we have experimented with the level of questions that would be asked on standards, and we used one part of the standard that actually consisted of nine parts. One of our standards have nine parts in it. How do you test that in math? How do you test nine parts in one standard and say, your students passed the standard? I don't know how. And then on top of it, you would have questions of a 0 through 5 according to the rubric. How do you make those questions? How do you implement those questions? And do you get a 4 if you do the application question? And how many students are going to get that application question? Are their grade point averages going to drop? So these are the questions that arise to us every single day. How do we make these standards in math? And then on top of the standards, the standards are, standards aren't built according to a math curriculum. A math curriculum, one unit, one lesson builds upon another, builds upon another, builds upon another, all the way through. It's not like English, Science, and Social Studies where you can teach this over here, you can teach that over there. Math is built one upon the other, and it's so hard to see these standards all around, okay, if you pass this standard, you're good, but you couldn't answer this question if you had to. And that's what we see. And that's what we see. Now, we're teaching at, we're teaching at 49% right now, and I have been totally against the 49%. I've seen students do absolutely nothing. I've seen students come up to me and say, Mr. Schooly, I only have to do one out of every six assignments to pass. That's their goal? One out of every six assignments? They literally came up, they figured it out. They're not stupid. And they tell me this. And if you teach math and you know every assignment is built upon the other, how do you teach math when you're only, and when that student is only doing one out of the six assignments? They're going to be lost. They will be lost. I had another student skip all of the unit tests, every single one. All he did was do quizzes, because he knew he was getting a 49 on the unit tests. And he passed with a C because of that 49. That's tragic. How do we, as teachers, know what to adjust? How do we, as teachers, know, do you know this curriculum in a whole? Do you know this, you know? I understand what some of these teachers have said, okay, we clump it all together and we teach you that, you know, and stuff like that. But at the end of the day, at the end of the semester, do you really know the content? Or did we just teach it to the standard and say, hey, we're done? Because in math, you can't do that. Because next year, you're going to use that same stuff over and over and over again. So us, excuse me, us as math teachers, we want you to learn this so you can use it in September, October, next April, and next year. We cannot teach a standard and say, hey, we're done. And that's what's happening. So I went to your website, I went to the, oh, what was it? The, I think one of you guys sent this email out where it had the Google Slides, and I looked at the presentation. That presentation is beautiful. I'm sitting there reading this, I'm saying, no wonder people buy into this. People are going to buy into this just because of that presentation. It looks good. It really does. So I, I printed out some of that presentation, and I looked at the A through F, and it matched up with the 4 through 0. And I started looking at that, and I said, is a C a 70 to 79? Are we really, are we really portraying that 70 to 79%? Because that's 79%, does not, does not have a bottom. There's 0 through 49% missing. Now, I know we're supposed to bring this mindset into our mind, saying, okay, we got a 4 through 0 scale, those percentages don't matter anymore. But when we portray this, saying, okay, this, this kid's got a 2, he's got a C, he's got a 70%, that is not a 70%. Several of us, several of us math teachers did the math on this. You can get a C with a 28 to, I don't know, 42%, and that's what we all figured, somewhere in there, 28 to 42%. Most of us got a 35% out of it. You got 35% of the curriculum? Do you know what we do mostly today? We backfill our lessons so we can teach our lessons, because they have missed so many assignments before. Our students are getting lazier and lazier and lazier because of this implemented system. I've seen, I've seen it every day. I am being told not to give out homework. I'm being told to give out the 49. I'm being told, just get them to do your classwork. And now it's a chore to get them, get them to get a piece of paper and a pencil out. We need to push our, our students. We need to raise this bar higher, not lower. And I feel that this standards-based grading, although it will work, and I'm, I'll give you that, it will work. If I had 20 to 40 students, I could make it work. I have 170-plus students. There's no way I can visit every student all the time for each standard. In geometry, there are 39 standards. There are 119 sub-standards in those standards. And when I mean sub-standards, it takes 119 lessons to teach those 39 standards. And if I skipped out on any of those 119 sub-standards, they would not get those standards. So what are we told? We are told that we're only going to grade on 12 standards, the SLOs, the 12 standards. Do you think that these kids are going to know that we're going to teach these, we're going to grade on these 12 standards? And why are we teaching, why are we grading on only 12 standards? Because that's what, I guess that's what we're hearing from our meetings and stuff, 12 standards. That's less than, that's less than 67% of the curriculum. Why are we only, why are we only doing this? 39 standards is way too much, is improbable, is, it cannot be done in high school. Now, in elementary, middle school, maybe, maybe. It may, it might work, because you have less students, you have, you have a one-on-one with these kids. It would take me two days to sit down with each kid and ask them questions to see if they knew the standard, a one-on-one. It would take me two days. That's how many students I have. And yet, I'm supposed to implement these, implement standard-based grading. And that's, that's what it would take. I really want you guys to consider exactly which way we're going here, if we're going in this direction. Is this really good for the curriculum for our kids? Is it really? I've asked several people about this situation, and the word fraud came up. That's a horrible word for a school system, fraud. That's from two different people at two different times. Are we frauding our public? Are we frauding our parents? Me as a taxpayer? Yes. Me as a parent? Yes. I sent my child to ASU this year. Now, keep in mind, I'm going to tell you the 100% truth, and that's going to embarrass my kid. Excuse me, sorry. He had taken English in high school. He did not test out in English in college, ASU. He had to retake English in ASU, and he failed the English in ASU. What happened? Now, when he took the English in high school, he was a B-plus student, high 80s. Why did he not test out? And why did he fail it in college? Those were my questions. Now, he took all honors classes in math, and he took precal in math, and he went to ASU, and he's successful in math. But in English, he could not do it. For some reason, he could not do it. Did we set him up for failure? He found out that there is no assignments past the due date. He found out there's no retakes for his tests. He found out after the fact. He found out what he was used to is not going in general life. No matter if you have a job, no matter if you have any type of career, you guys know you have deadlines. Why don't we teach these kids something? I know retakes and giving them extra opportunities is a wonderful thing, I really do. Okay, we have this child, he's behind, we need to help him. I do understand that. But what are we teaching them? Kids will manipulate everything they, you give them, everything. And they do. Every time we give them an opportunity, they'll twist it and turn it and take advantage of you. It's as simple as that. I'm sorry, I took a long time. Another thing that really upsets me, being a teacher in this school district and in the state of Arizona, is we are rated in the bottom five in every single category in the United States, and yet we don't improve our academic system. And I do not see the standards-based grading improving our academic system. I see more lazy students than ever before. Nobody pushes them. Two years ago, I had a parent come into my classroom, and, and the child was one of a twin. And she said, how come my student is getting a C in your class and my, and my other daughter is getting an A in the other class? I looked at her, I, I said, do you want me to give your daughter an A? Do you want her to learn something? It was as simple as that. And she realized something. She moved from Arizona to Michigan. She was an honors student in Arizona, and she was two years behind in Michigan. Why was she two years behind in Michigan? That just floors me. Do we not want our kids to have an education here? We really got to consider all the things we give them and how they manipulate things. You lose good teachers by manipulating this stuff and telling them, oh, you have to give free grades? How are we supposed to be miracle workers when we have only, we have a 49% to implement? How are we supposed to be miracle workers? You guys want us to come with these great test scores, you want us to teach, and yet we get batted down with a 49%. It's not good. You guys are saving two or three students at the bottom, and you are losing a mound of students at the top, a mound of them. Thank you.
Kendra Emmett. State your name and your school.
My name is Kendra Emmett. I'm here to represent my daughters who attend O'Connor High School. I have, I had a senior at O'Connor last year, and I have a senior this year. I want to make it very clear that standards-based grading is a compilation, is a compilation of theories and opinions pieced together by educators and writers for thesis papers. There is nothing proven, there is nothing statistical that states standards-based grading is any better than traditional grading. Standards-based grading was never proposed to the board as a policy to be approved to go through in our schools. It was never presented. I understand there was a committee put together in 2017. I was part of it, until I was told parents weren't welcome and their opinions weren't appreciated. From day one, there weren't options to talk about grading. It was only standard-based grading that was the option. There weren't consultations. We had speakers and lecturers in there to discuss only standards-based grading. When it was questioned by myself, maybe not the majority of opinion in that group, it was very well-known that I was not welcome there anymore. This went on for several years. COVID happened, things get postponed. It hit my daughter's high school last year, both juniors and seniors. I don't even know where to begin with this hot mess. So last year at O'Connor, we had these 0 through 4 grades. Nobody knew what was going on. Nobody knew what a 1 went, nobody knew what a 2, 3, 4, whatever. We had no definitions, we had no answers, the teachers had no answers. I've been bringing this to the district since October 12, 2021, was my first email. And I understand that was in the middle of COVID, and a lot of other nonsense was happening, but this is now, two years later. We want an answer. We want to know what is going on, because my daughter lost a scholarship because she got a C in one class her whole high school career. It took her down, it took her, they're talking about grade point averages not dropping? That's baloney, because it does. When you have straight A students, freshman, sophomore, junior year, and then they all of a sudden get one C, guess what? Guess what? Their grade point average drops. To qualify, you need at least a 3.5, most colleges, a 3.75 for a four-wide scholarship. You can get the $2,000, $5,000 scholarships with a 3.0 GPA, but the minute your, your GPA drops below 3.5, 3.75 at most colleges, out the window it goes. Bye. For one C in their entire high school career. I have a junior, a junior last year that's a senior this year that got a C as well, she got a 2, I'm sorry, she got a 2 last year. It dropped her out of running for any scholarship as well. She's a senior this year, and now she's trying to make up a class that she, that was not required for graduation. It was earth science. It was not required when she was a freshman. When she started her sophomore year, she picked chem, because at the time, it was a prerequisite to get into. So she didn't pick earth science. Halfway through sophomore year, she's then told, earth science is now a required course to take. Why? No other kids had to take it. It was because AZ Merit came out with a new test, and she needed to take it her junior year. So now she's required to take earth science that we had to pay for, and she had to spend her summer taking honors earth science, not just regular honors earth science. We were under the impression it was the full year. I have an email from the teacher that says, this is a full-year course. Well, apparently, it's not, because now she's having to take the second half of it this year, her senior year, online, to substitute, to substitute a grade out. Because I went to her counselor, and I says, look, how do we get rid of this, this, this one grade? If she doesn't need it to graduate, then why can't we take the, the A and the B or whatever she's getting in her honors earth science class and substitute it out? Gail, I've emailed you, I don't know how many times now, asking the same questions. I get no responses, or I get a wackadoodle, twisted response. There's a notice on the district website that states, if your child performs, not at mastery, at a proficient level on AZ Merit, science, SAT or ACT scores, they get an automatic grade bump. I have my daughters, all my daughters' test scores. She's at a proficient level, some above proficient level. She has not received any grade bumps. With that, I've emailed, I've asked, I've gone to the counselor. The counselor and I have some kind, a little bit of an agreement going on now, but still nothing from the district. So my kid's now a senior, getting ready to graduate here in a few months, applying for colleges. Two years later, we're still waiting on answers. I've got one up in ASU. Guess what, guys? She gets graded on participation in her classroom. She gets graded on attendance. She doesn't get to hand in work assignment, or her assignments in late. She doesn't get to retake tests, but her whole senior year, she, she got to do all that. Did it help? Absolutely not. Is it going to help my one that's a senior this year? Absolutely not, because that is not how life works. You don't get to show up late, you don't get to tell your boss you don't want to do something. You don't get to retake and retake and redo, because your butt's going to get fired and you're going to end up on the unemployment line. Bottom line, it doesn't work. I want to touch real quick, sorry to take up so much time, when Mr. Miller was speaking about the scholarships and the As and all that stuff not dropping. He's not a great one for answers. Trust me, I've gone to him several times. He pawned you off on somebody else.
Can we please keep it just to standards-based grading?
Yep, sure, not a problem.
And not.
So at the last study session that was held here, the district put some graphs up. And the graphs from O'Connor for the year 21, 22 very clearly state, there was a 10% decrease in the letter grade of As, which were 4s. You could clearly see, for the fiscal year of 21, 22, As decreased. There was a dramatic increase by 15% in Bs and Cs. Ds and Fs dropped. So if you're looking at a graph scale, you've got, for just the one year, your As come down, your Bs and Cs shoot up, and your Ds and Fs drop from the year before. What does that tell you? Everybody's a B or C student. Your A students drop, your Ds and Fs students come up. The graph shows it clear as day. And it's, it was made by the district, so I got to go off those numbers. Talking about scholarships, Sandro D. O'Connor received over $25 million, the highest ever. There were 663 graduating seniors last year in class of 2022. So we're supposed to get a report on the breakdown of these scholarships months ago. Mrs. Fisher asked for it. If O'Connor received $25 million in scholarships, and the graph is showing that there was a drop in GPAs, who got the scholarships? And where's all the money? Because I'm telling you, something, I'm not a math person, maybe he could help me back there, but it's not adding up. Because when you've got dropped GPAs, you're not going to have that many scholarships. Bottom line. So if somebody could explain that, that would be great. Seventh and eighth graders saw similar effects with their grades, the K through 6. They're, they don't have the, the separation of the teachers and the classes to classes. The test, the test retakes, they're in a constant cycle. It's, are we making sure that what is being taught matches the standards that these kids are doing? Are teachers writing their own tests? Because if they're just pulling a test off the computer, or that's something that comes with their curriculum, what is being guaranteed that when my kid is going to take that test, that they're, and they're going to be graded on those standards, that they were actually taught those standards? Because I, when I look at Power School, since classwork and homework isn't graded, I see, for example, so my daughters do enrollment English class this year. So far since January, since we returned to school after, after winter break, three three grades have been inputted. What are we in, a little over a month of school? Three grades have been inputted. Two of them don't count because they're in process learning. So technically, right now, she has one grade that counts towards her overall grade. And I can't see it, just says standard ELA HSR R1-3. That's what it says in Power School. I don't know what that standard is. I highly doubt if my kid knows what that standard is. But that's what she was tested on. Leading up to that test, I have no idea if she learned it because there's no practice work entered under that, under that standard. There's nothing telling me that my daughter learned it, did the work, did it on time, and got tested on it. All I see is that she was tested on that standard and received a grade. So how do I know my daughter is learning what she's learning, what standard, if it's going off of these weird codes? And then she's going to be able to use that particular standard on something else in life, that she's not just memorizing something to take a test? Because I don't know what that standard is. And it's like that in every single class she has. It was like that last year, except we didn't have the benefit. Power School wasn't working like this last year. We didn't have the option to see the standards. So it was even, it was a little bit worse. It's somewhat better this year, but it's still a hot mess. So here's another class, her statistics class. Again, there was an agreement at one of the board meetings that there was supposed to be one meaningful grade entered every week. That's not happening. It hasn't happened all year. I print Power School once a week. There's months that go by with no grades entered in these classes. I don't know what my kid is learning for a month, a month and a half at a time because nothing ever is entered. The only time it's entered is when a test pops up. Do I see learning progression? Nope. I don't see anything. I just see a grade pop up one month, the next month, that's it. If she does good, great. If she doesn't, well, what do I do? She goes back and she gets into this test cycle. So when you, when a student goes and asks the teacher, "Hey, I didn't do good on this test. Could I retake it?" Teacher says, "Sure." Makes schedule for after school, whatever.
Can I just interrupt? Because I need some clarification. You said O'Connor. O'Connor has talent time. Is that not when they take their retakes?
Not all the time, no. If they need tutoring in math, but they need to make up an ELA test, they will go to talent time to get tutoring in math over making up the ELA test.
And so then the ELA is pushed to before or after school?
But yeah, to make up the test, yes. It would be pushed to usually after. A lot of people don't like coming in before 7 o'clock.
And there's no key somewhere to know what the standard is that's being graded?
I can show you exactly what I printed out from Power School if you'd like.
Well, just yes or no? I mean, because if there isn't a key, then it needs to be one.
Not that I know of, no.
The third thing is, with all of this month at a time, have you contacted the teacher to find out what's going on?
I used to, I used to, but I was always getting, "That's what I'm told to do," or...
So you would ask, "Hey, it's been a month. I haven't seen a progress grade or a process grade or a meaningful grade." And the teacher writes back, "Well, that's what I'm told to do." I'm just really trying to understand how...
They are told, what I have been explained is that practice work, homework, classwork, is not to be entered for grades. The only thing that's entered for grades is when the test happens, and the test doesn't happen once a week.
So in high school, they only post on Power Schools' test grades?
Yes, I can show it to you right here if you'd like to look. It's only test grades. Every class I have printed.
Could you just, I'm just trying to understand because I, I've talked to 100 parents, and I haven't heard that yet from a few different high schools. And I've talked to teachers too, but I'm just trying to understand if what the, what the issues are are not specific to a teacher or if it's technology or, or what it is. So could you just clear that up for me as much as you can?
President Paperman, Ms. Ordway, I'll speak to O'Connor. When a parent goes on the website, the Power School website, they can click on their child, and they can click on the courses, and then they can see the, the assignments and the standards. The standards are a little blue tab next to the assignment that you click on, and it'll show the standards that have been part of that particular assignment. There are both in-process and assessment learning. There are grades for both.
For a second, so, so far are we on, on the same track?
No, ma'am, not in every class. And it depends on the teacher if they're putting in-progress work in. Not every teacher does.
Okay, I just wanted to know now, now finish how it's supposed to go.
If parents go to the Power School app, they don't have the same experience at this time to be able to see all of the information that is part of the, the website, Power School. So they may not see everything. But we've encouraged all of our parents from the beginning of the school year to utilize the web-based Power School website. But when I've looked at just a few of, of the courses, we are basically the fifth week into the second semester, and I have seen anywhere from four to, this particular teacher has eight assignments, whether it's assessment or in-process. So for the courses that I am looking at, they have done their best to keep up with the requirement of one meaningful grade per week. Again, parents have a different experience on the app than they do on the web-based version. And we encourage them to go to the web-based version.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, this is the first time I'm hearing about a web-based.
See that? Great question you brought up, so I could ask that question. So this information about the web-based Power Schools is, if not today, common knowledge will be tomorrow?
President Paperman, Ms. Ordway, the Power School web-based version is what we've had for at least, I would say, 15 years or more. And before the app was available, that was all parents could go to, was the web-based. So we have pushed out both the app and the web-based versions. But before, before just a few years ago, there was no app version.
Yeah, I know. I never had that opportunity to have an app for that.
Whatever I'm printing on, this is what I'm, this is what I have. And I print it every week, so it's not like it's changing. Like, this is the same, I see the same thing since, since last year.
Okay, we're going to go back to standard-based grading. We're trying to give the information for board members, you know, to, to be aware of what the community concerns or if they're foreign.
I don't want to take up too much time, but if you want copies of what I have, you're more than welcome to them. Like I said, I don't know if I use the app or the web. I just go to my Google, type in DBSD Power School, do my login, and this is what pulls up. Because Canvas isn't right either. Canvas doesn't show the grades either. So if, if students or parents are trying to look at grades, and those are our two options, Canvas or Power School, they don't even match at all. So I really ask that the board understand where parents, students, and teachers are all coming from. I ask that you take serious consideration into understanding and appreciating the time and effort that went into this. However, it doesn't work. It may work for a handful. It doesn't work for the majority. And there is absolutely, when I first started this, I was speaking for over 300 people, between parents and teachers. And I'm glad, I'm so happy tonight that I see other teachers come and speak on SBG and what they're experiencing, because I've been speaking to them for months and months. And the saddest thing, other than the inconsistency and the poor implementation of SBG, was to hear teachers cry to me, either on the phone or I would meet them for coffee, and tell me that how fearful they were of coming to speak at these meetings. And I think that is more bothersome than, than anything. Because if we have a district where teachers don't feel comfortable enough to even come and speak, that's a problem, and that's a bigger problem than anything I think this district can even, even consider handling at this point. Thank you.
Are there any other community members that would like to come up and speak? We have until 8 o'clock. Okay, you may come up. Anyone else, just take a seat and then take turns. State your name and the school that your, that your child is or you teach.
My name is Julie Leovick. I teach at Boulder Creek High School. This is my fourth year there, and it is my fourth year teaching. So to kind of paint a story, my first year of teaching was the year we went on lockdown. My second year of teaching was the year we came back from lockdown. We were on a block schedule, two-hour classes for math. As you could probably imagine, was not a fun experience for students or kids because there are opinions of math. And then last year was the start of this, and then this. And my first day with the district was four years ago over the summer at, I think it was Sandro Day or Barry Goldwater, in the library for the rollout of Project Momentum. And it seems every year, something is changing between COVID and the standards-based grading. And like Mr. Schoolly said, I have, I teach six fifths. I teach Algebra I, II, Algebra III, IV, and College Algebra. So six classes, roughly 36 kids per class. Like, I think it's wonderful that the teachers at Union Park get to sit down and talk to their students about their different standards, about every question. I don't have the time to do that. And it's just, I, my mom, like my family is probably like head on the swivel, yo-yo. Because I go to her every other week saying, "I want to quit teaching." And it is my fourth year. I have wanted to be a teacher, a math teacher, since I was in the sixth grade when one of my teachers made such a huge impact on my life, showed me how much she cared for me. And whether it's standards-based grading or whether it's the traditional grade scale, I will care for my students. I want to see them succeed. And I'm reaching the point of overworked, too tired. This is more stuff to add to it. We're not giving the time, we're not giving the resources. We're given as much time as we can during the day, but then it takes us out of our classrooms. It takes us away from our kids. And I had a kid, we have the district interim exam. We have to give twice a year. Because of this 49%, Dave was going great, giving this test to all my kids. Kid walks in seventh period and goes in front of the whole class, "You know, I don't think I'm going to do well. I don't really know how to do anything. I'm just going to take my 49%. No, thank you, I'm not taking this," and walked to the back of the room and sat down. Did that on another test about three, four weeks later because he knew he was getting the 49%. And then we've been told this year in January that we could, if kids weren't taking the tests, if they're not doing the assessments, we can give them an I. And if the I is in the grade book until the end of the year because they're not taking the tests, we can fail them. I had kids in my fifth-hour class, they go, "Well, then why are we changing the grade scale? That's very subjective. Why don't we just go back to the original grade scale?" And I love working with my kids. It is, like, I was having the crappiest day one day, and I had a kid come up to me, and he goes, "Ms. Leovick, I made you something." And I just almost started crying because I've made these connections with kids. I love working with my kids. But at least in high school in math, it's just not working. And yes, I was one of those teachers that they were saying. I did not sign up because I was afraid to speak, but I just needed to get it out there. So thank you.
Sue Piotrowski. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak about standards-based grading and reporting in DVUS. I am a fifth-grade teacher at Paseo Hills with more than 10 years of experience in using the standards-based mindset to guide instruction, grading, and reporting. I have volunteered on the original SBG committees, have been a part of curriculum adoptions. I've worked on summer curriculum work teams, developing scope and sequence, designing instructional materials, activities, and assessments to align with new standards. I am currently on, I am one of the campus trainers for Power Schools. Even with all of this experience, the shift to SBG and R at a Phase II school has been difficult and extremely time-consuming. Here are some pros and cons from my perspective. Pro: Standards-based grading takes behavior and practice out of academic grades. This should lead to a more accurate reflection of what students know and are able to do. Pro: Tagging standards increases and keeps the focus of instruction and assessment on what the state of Arizona says students should know and be able to do in each content and grade. This also helps communicate exactly what part of content standards students are proficient or deficient in. Pro: In traditional grading, a 10-point spread of 90 to 100 was an A, considered mastery. While students could have a 59-point spread, 0 to 59, of failure, considered an F. Narrowing the grade scale with SBG makes averaging more equitable and mathematically accurate. Pro: The category of in-process learning, formerly known as homework, practice, and exit tickets should be used to inform instruction. What did the students do well at? What did they struggle with? Does the data show the need for reteaching, for more practice, or more intensive skills groups? We wouldn't judge a performance on the first weeks of rehearsal, a championship game on how a player did at drills in practice, or an evaluation of a teacher on the first day of school. Cons: In order to measure proficiency on the standards, we need standard measurement tools. Currently, PLC teams are writing new assessments that focus on the essential standards being measured and developing rubrics to scale proficiency. These teams are made of one to four teachers. So, for example, in fifth-grade ELA, we can assume there are at least 10 different teams writing separate tests to measure the same standards. Our students deserve research-based, well-constructed assessments that accurately and authentically measure their level of learning and proficiency on the standards. Con: It is difficult to hold students accountable for missing assignments and assessments with the current one-to-four scale in K6. A zero scale for no evidence would be helpful. With the current programming of Power Schools, missing assessments are not calculated into the overall grade. They are solely marked as missing. If a student chooses not to complete work, the academic grade does not reflect this. Citizenship or behavior grades can reflect this, but there is very little emphasis on these grades in this district. Con: The current one-to-four scale is very difficult to establish the boundaries of what is a one, what is a two, what is a three, and what is a four. Teams have been working to create rubrics, but these are for each assessment or assignment by content. Con: There is a lack of consistency across grades, teams, and campuses for recording in Power Schools. In a Phase I or II school, a two and a D are not comparable. Where is the unified in this practice? Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am happy to answer questions or offer suggestions moving forward.
I just have one question. Are you pro-work on?
I am pro-standers-based mindset. I am con with the rollout as is.
I'm not sure which one of you is that first. Go ahead and just state your name and the school.
Hello, yes, thank you. It's working, yes. Yes, I'm, I'm, wow, okay, I'm Dr. Heiner. My children go to Boulder Creek High School, as well as the K through 8 schools. I just wanted to come to this meeting tonight. This is kind of overwhelming as a parent. This is kind of overwhelming as a parent in the community. I've just recently kind of heard about these things, um, the standard-based grading that's been going on since I'm not a full-time educator. Um, I do, however, have full-time educators in my family. Um, and I'm very grateful for the educators that work every day to educate our students. Uh, it's my hope that, um, first of all, we all have pretty similar goals, I hope, which is to attain a really good education for our students and prepare them for the world ahead. Uh, how we go about doing that, and preparing them to apply to competitive colleges in function of the real world, we might have differences about, or clearly we do, the grading process. Um, so as I stated, I'm a physician myself. Uh, as a physician, I've taken a lot of tests, as you all might imagine. I had about 10 years of school after college. Uh, I do have some experience with, um, both reviewing applications, school applications, residency positions for medical training, as well as applying for scholarships myself. Uh, I have six children in the school system currently. Both of my high school students are straight A students. Um, one of my, one of my children is top of his class, we've been told that. And I also have children who are on IEP programs, on, also on a 504. Um, so I understand the need to create and have a school that works both for those students who may struggle, and also for those who excel. It seems to me, um, from a parent's perspective, that um, the standards-based grading program has been or gotten attention. I don't know, this might be incorrect, but that there's a need to help those students who are failing, uh, too frequently in our district. Um, but my concern and the main point I wanted to address tonight is on those students who are preparing to apply to competitive colleges and/or receive scholarship applications, and that this might hurt them. Because I've reached out and talked to a number of other parents, and I've heard that it is hurting them, as has been expressed tonight from some other parents. I did want to talk about, uh, also, I think sometimes we talk about standards-based grading in terms of the whole district. Um, I read online, I believe, that K through eight and the high school um, grading system, it, or at least the standards-based are a little different. But I think they really should be implemented differently, because from my standpoint personally, I do want my children to have a very good K through eight education. But because those grades don't necessarily affect, you know, their college application, they're not on it, uh, the type of grading program that's utilized, I don't have as strong of an opinion about. Uh, also, from what I've read about standards-based grading, it requires a little bit less homework grading. So I do question a little bit, a conflict of interest in some K through eight teachers who might express that they're for standards-based grading, because perhaps it means that they don't have to do as much homework correction and grading, and maybe it simplifies their schedule. That might be a positive, if they're able to teach the students more, and I'm fine with that. But I do think there's a little bit of a conflict of interest when they're speaking about how we should grade our high school students, when it's making their job potentially easier as a K through eight teacher. I think those are different points. In terms of the high school students, um, from the little data, like I think I've seen one graph, and I've heard some data mentioned tonight, and I'm kind of a data-driven person. In terms of the data, it does seem that the number of students receiving fours is generally less than the number of students receiving As. Uh, that concerns me a lot of four. Uh, A is a 4.0 on a 4.0 scale, uh, whereas a three, which a lot of those former A students are receiving is a 3.0. And that's like a massive difference. That's like you can get a 4.0, you can get a full ride scholarship to many state schools. And a 3.0, a lot of really competitive schools won't even consider you. And they definitely generally not get considered for scholarships. Um, in terms of the scholarship data that was referenced, uh, and I don't know exactly what that data entails, but I will say that that's really easy to manipulate. Um, going back to my own high school experience, like 20-plus years ago, I remember I had a classmate who I was good friends with, who's a gymnast, and she had like a million dollars in scholarships herself, because she had like scholarships to like 100 different schools nationwide that were all for ride for her gymnastics. There was one student that like skewed the whole data for the school in terms of how much scholarship money was available. What it was not, was a reporting of how many individual students were receiving partial or full ride scholarships. So I think to say, oh, there's this many dollars in scholarships, is a completely skewed data point that doesn't really illustrate the truth. So I guess in short, I just want to state that this is important to me. I think our community has a real opportunity um, to have great schools. Um, but I'm really concerned as someone who's reviewed applications myself. We talk about, oh, they can, they can translate a one through four to, uh, A through F or 4.0 scale. I've called colleges, I've talked to admissions officers, I used to be one myself, who reviewed things for residency spot applications. You don't have time, that's why they have standardized tests like the ACT and SAT, because you don't have time to go and get to know every local school district on a national level, know how they grade, know what's taught, and know what the, the grading is. So, um, I think keeping a 4.0 scale, that's what they're going to utilize. Whether or not you get there from one through four or A through F, they're going to do a 4.0 conversion, that's what's going to be utilized. And a three on a one through four scale is going to be a 3.0, and a, and an A is going to be a 4.0, and that's a massive difference. So I hope we consider that, uh, and our children's futures. I'd be fine if we make the minimum grade a 60%. If failing's a problem, let's just give all those kids a 60, they can graduate straight Ds, and we won't have failing students. But let's not hurt our A and B students, who are, who are pushing everyone to raise the bar higher and really achieve a strong education. If we don't, if we do go for a standards-based grading, I personally will probably, I, I probably will move out of the district, frankly, with my younger children. And I'm afraid that we have other high-achieving engineers and stuff coming here, and I really worry about the future of the district, and, you know, with standards-based grading. I think it's sort of dumbing us down, making us a little different than the rest of the community. So I'll, I'll under that. Thank you for your consideration, and, and I do appreciate the teachers very much. Um, I hope we can grade, grade appropriately for our students.
Okay, we do have, uh, one more speaker. Um, we have about five minutes, but we're going to go a little bit longer, so if you want to go ahead, um, I, if everybody's willing to extend it a little. Can we? No?
No, we have posted it.
So we have five minutes, we have, now we have two speakers. Um, but we have, you know, say what you need to, and, and if you, if we hit the time, then that's where we'll have to end.
Okay. I'm Scott Landon, I'm from Sanderdale O'Connor High School. Um, I was up speaking in front of the board two weeks ago. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Carver and Ms. Simacek for coming to, to O'Connor, to coming to talk to us and see what it's like to be in the trenches, and how we're dealing with standard-based grading. And I guess it's really not how we're dealing with. Like I said two weeks ago, it taught this old dog some new tricks. And I figured out some different ways on how to do what I've been doing for a very long time. I think that sometimes we need to be really careful. We need to be really careful about what's actually happening versus what we hear is happening. I think we need to be really cognizant of also how we're affecting people that are, um, underneath of us as well, like our, I guess we could call them our stakeholders as well. I ask that the board considers very carefully, um, what they decide to do. My biggest fear is that I'm going to come to work on two, on Wednesday, February 15th, and I have to change everything that I've been doing. That's the last thing that I want. And please be careful about our students as well. If we change what we're doing, we're going to have seniors that have been graded with four different systems. Please be careful. Be careful about how we make our next steps. Make sure that you do gather that information. Make sure that you do come and see those that are actually implementing, and that are actually putting it into place. Like I said, you've, we've taught this old guy some, some new things. And I've gotten pretty excited about teaching in the past couple of years. All because of putting this into play. Thank you.
Here we go. Hi. I'm Teresa Sanders, and I'm the eighth-grade science teacher at Union Park. I'm also a comeback kid. I grew up in this district. I was a student here when I was in third grade, all the way when I graduated from O'Connor. I worked the system when I was a teenager in school. I figured out exactly how many exams I had to take in order to keep my Bs. Doesn't matter what grading system we use, there's going to be students that try to work it. But I can tell you-
We, we are, we're out of time, sorry, I apologize, because we have it on the agenda from six to eight. So we cannot go over, uh, our time.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. And my goal is to learn. I'm here as an educator and as a learner, and if I am not teaching my students how to learn by being a learner myself, then what am I doing here?
Okay, thank you for the community members that share their, uh, concerns and views, and, uh, and this is going to be helpful for the new board. Uh, I called in order to adjourn.
Second, so moved.
All this in favors, say aye.